All right, I want to call through order the regularly scheduled meeting in the Board of Education for Community Unit District 186. And Mrs. Hines, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bane?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Mrs. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Ruggie?
Here. Next item, pledge allegiance, Mr. Carrington, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Evers, are there any changes or additions to the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated July the 20th of 2021, District 186 Special Board Meeting Minutes dated August the 2nd, 2021, Tri-County Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated July the 14th, 2021, Tri-County Budget Hearing Minutes dated July the 14th of 2021, Tri-County Bills for August of 2021, applications and reports, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
For all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 Bills for August of 2021. I'll open the floor. Any questions of Mrs. Bush on the bills? If there are none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is Communications, and it looks like you have a lot.
We do, we have seven. Okay, so the first one is from Stacy Stanton. "Dr. Evers and the Board of Education, please accept my resignation. While I was not planning on leaving, an opportunity presented itself that I could not pass up. Thank you for the opportunity to work at District 186." Stacy Stanton.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that resignation.
Is that effective immediately?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one's from Joan Rogers. "Dear Dr. Evers, please accept my letter of resignation effective August the 10th, 2021. I will not be able to fulfill my duties as a paraprofessional in April Bartnik's Room during the 21-22 school year at Murkisboro Middle School. I truly appreciate the opportunities afforded for professional and personal growth as a paraprofessional during my time at MMS. I wish everyone a safe and rewarding school year. Sincerely, Joan Rogers."
I'll entertain a motion to approve that resignation. So move. Second?
I'll second.
Take your pick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one is from Cyan Person. Person. "Dear Mr. Navara, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from assistant soccer coach effective as of today, August 1st, 2021. I would love to back down to volunteer status only. My volunteer status will only be for the boys' 21-22 soccer season because I received a better job for spring of '22. I sincerely apologize for the abrupt timing of this announcement. Thank you for the great opportunities to pursue my interests through your athletic program, which has prepared me well for my next chapter. I wish you and the program the best moving forward. Sincerely."
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve that resignation. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one is from Phoebe Chin. "Dear Mr. Todd, I, Phoebe Chin, hereby tender this letter of resignation from the position of a classroom aide, effective August the 9th, 2021. I believe it is time for me to take on a different adventure in the coming semester. Thank you for fruitful and eventful three years of working with Corether's teachers and staff. I have learned to be creative in terms of classroom teaching, to be compassionate towards students, and to be humbled in learning new ways to solve problems. Corether's staff have been very kind and accepted me as an Asian staff and including me in their community. I met some of the kindest souls in this school. With my own eyes, I saw many teachers and staff treat students who are disadvantaged in their socially-economic status with respect, in addition to providing them with material and financial assistance. I will surely miss the many friendships I have formed at Corether's. Thank you once again."
I'll entertain a motion to approve that resignation. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one is from Marika Davis. "Dear Georgia Marshall, I'm writing to notify you that I will be resigning from my position as assistant head cook effective July 23rd, 2021. I appreciate the opportunity and generally enjoyed working with Murkisboro School District. I will always treasure the memories and good times with everyone. The support and personal development you have provided has helped my career immensely and will forever be grateful for that. If I can be of any assistance during this transition, please let me know. Sincerely, Marika."
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that resignation.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one is from Monica May. "Dr. Evers and the Board of Education, as per the MEA contract, coursework beyond a master's degree must be approved prior to taking the courses. I am asking for approval of seven credit hours of coursework from Idaho State University be added to my salary scale upon completion. Thank you, Monica May."
I'll entertain a motion to approve that additional coursework. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Should there be one more?
Yep, one more. "Dear Board of Education, I have been offered a fellowship with the SIU NOS Master Teaching Program. This will benefit my class through a yearly through a yearly material stipend and experience in education that I can use to further the science education of my students. I will be taking classes beyond the master's level and would ask that these hours be added to the master's plus 16 step when completed. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, Michelle Asa."
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that additional coursework.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That's it?
Yeah.
Item number eight's fishbowl items. I see a fishbowl, so I assume we have at least one.
I've got one. Um, this is from Mrs. Waddington, second grade teacher at General. Uh, hello, Ms. Finkie and Dr. Evers. I wanted to take a few minutes to brag on two of our aides that worked with K through two staff and students during summer school. Ms. Turner and Ms. Trashansky went above and beyond to help not just the teachers, but the students as well. They take pride in their work and care about each student. It shows when they work with each and every kid. Mr. Trashansky even made a set of flashcards for each of my second graders to take home and keep practicing before school starts. I can't thank these two ladies enough for their help during summer school. Mrs. Waddington.
Is that the only one? Okay. Next item is the Freedom of Information Act request. It looks like we had one from Sherry Reed with Smart Procurement. There's anything that you need to add to this, Dr. Evers? Okay, that's informational only. Next item is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to kind of step up, and we've got, we're recording this, so I need for you to come forward a little bit, state your name, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, I'd first like to thank the school board for devoting their time and energy so generously.
I need, I'm sorry, I need your name.
Oh, my name is Elizabeth Withrow, and um, I'd also like to thank the faculty and staff of the school district. Um, we've worked with some really great people, so I just wanted to start with that. I'm gonna be talking about my son Ross. He has a genetic condition called Down Syndrome. Uh, this happens when an individual is born with an extra copy of the 21st chromosome. There are several different characteristics um, that are typical in these individuals, but I'll just be highlighting a few. One of these is heart defects. Ross was born with a partial AV canal. He had several holes in his heart, and the atrial and mitral valves were severely cleft. These issues were fixed whenever he was six months old, and he is now a healthy five-year-old. Another characteristic of Down Syndrome is a physiological difference in the cranial structure. So whenever he does get sick, um, it can get more severe for him. He's burned to ear infections and pneumonia more than a typical person. People with Down Syndrome also commonly have learning delays, and he also has a dual diagnosis of autism. So these learning disabilities make it very important for him to get speech and occupational therapies through the school. A huge part of these therapies is Ross being able to see a therapist's mouth. This helps aid in the development of communication, both through verbal and visual cues. There have been countless unlawful oversteps throughout this pandemic with ever-changing statistics and data that ignore the negative health effects, both physical and mental, caused by their gross negligence of data sets that show that how ineffective masks are. Due to the massively unproven efficacy of mask-wearing to help stop the spread of the COVID-19 virus, I ask this school board to stop the mandatory masking and leave it up to the parents. We have been incredibly blessed with Ross's overall health, and while we certainly worry about how COVID or any other virus would affect him, we worry more about the risks that we know will happen if he is forced to wear a mask that will exacerbate his conditions. We take our son's health very seriously, but I want to make it clear that the only people responsible for making these decisions for my son are myself and my husband, guided by the multiple doctors we've been working with since he was born. I've compiled a list of studies on the health issues of mask-wearing for long periods of time, and one I would like to highlight is a 2006 one done on surgeons measuring the blood oxygenation levels and the heart rates. Wearing a mask for extended periods of time decreases the blood oxygen levels and increases the heart rate, which in a typical person causes symptoms such as shortness of breath and headaches. Our son's heart is doing great for the extent of repairs that had to be done. However, it will never function like that of a typical person, and this leaves him more vulnerable. To quote neurosurgeon Russell Blalock, "By wearing a mask, the exhaled viruses will not be able to escape and will build up and concentrate in the nasal passages, enter the lungs, olfactory nerves, and travel into the brain. This means that viral and bacterial particles can get trapped inside the mask that would have generally been harmless, and they have a chance to reproduce in an ideal environment close to the mouth and the nose, increasing the risk of infection. Masking is not only detrimental to physical health, it also poses a mental health risk. Social connections and relationships are basic human needs, and masks cut out any, cut out very important parts of the human connection, leaving people feeling emotionally disconnected, isolated, and lonely. As for the efficacy of mask-wearing, it has been disproven several times over. The links I will provide you with include graphs of masked versus unmasked areas that show no positive effect in masking. I've also included the data from a Danish study that found virtually no difference of infection rate versus masked and unmasked participants. The last thing I would like to highlight is how masking is discriminatory to those who have medical conditions or differing abilities that makes it difficult for them to wear masks. Ross not only has some of these medical conditions, but he has sensory issues due to his autism. It can be overwhelming for him to have a face covering on. Ross was in preschool for the last three years with excellent teachers and aides and therapists, and masking just adds another barrier to the already complex case of his IEP. To summarize, masking is harmful to anyone for long periods of time, physically, mentally, and emotionally, but it is especially harmful to my son. The CDC's recommendations are just that, only recommendations. It's not one size fits all. As for Governor Prisker's mandate, it is intimidation that unlawfully infringes upon the rights of every person in Illinois. I am asking the school board to keep this in mind and give full health decision-making powers back to my, back to the parents. Hiding my son away because he is unable to wear a mask is degrading and discriminatory. This is a gross overstep, and I would like to remind every person here that nobody knows your child's health history better than you. No one is more qualified to make decisions regarding your child's health than you are, and no one has the right to take those decisions away from you. Thank you."
Thank you, Mrs. Withrow.
Um, I have a list of the links, and I'd also be happy to-
If you would leave that, uh, just hand that to Mrs. Bush, right? Mrs. Bush out there. I'm sorry.
I'd also be happy to email them to anybody who wants them.
Well, what I think I'll do is I'll have, uh, Mrs. Hines make a copy for each of the board members.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I've got something to say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Same thing, I need for you to step forward. What's your name?
I'm Kyle Burke. Okay. Hello, my name is Kyle Burke. My wife's name is Melissa Burke. She's the president of the PTO at General John A. Logan Tenant Center. In July, we authored and sent an email to the members of this school board, the superintendent, and the principals. We sent that email in response to the decision made by the school board members, District 186 administrators, to require everyone attending District 186 schools or entering their respective buildings to be required to wear a mask unless they could prove that they have been fully vaccinated. Before I go any further, this is not meant to be a condemnation. I want to say it for a, this is meant to be an invitation. I'm not, this is a tough time. It's unprecedented, and everyone's making a decision they feel is correct. I just feel like I wanted to make a statement. That decision was made before the July board meeting, voted and set in motion in the July, July meeting. Since that meeting, circumstances regarding COVID-19 have changed in Jackson County and throughout the United States. Namely, the number of positive COVID-19 cases and resulted hospitalizations in Jackson County have risen steadily over the past few weeks. Additionally, our governor has deemed it also necessary to mandate the wearing of masks in all public buildings throughout the state, regardless of vaccination status, with schools being included in that mandate. I wish to highlight a few points from that email that was sent. Before I do that, I want to make it clear that I am not anti-vaccination or anti-masking, while social distancing is not possible. I believe in the effectiveness of the current vaccines in assisting in slowing the spread of the virus and guarding against severe illness that these viruses can cause. I also believe in obeying laws and complying with temporary government mandates, regardless of whether I agree with them or not. My intentions now and always will be to talk through issues peacefully and resolve concerns with civility. That being stated, I understand that we are currently mandated in this state for our governor to wear a mask in all public schools, as I stated previously. And as a result, we as parents currently have no choice as to the future of mask-wearing options in the near future. With the unknown period of time associated with this current mandate notwithstanding, this shouldn't stop the important conversation regarding the necessity of masks in our schools or otherwise if an individual is fully vaccinated and is able to social distance themselves. In the referenced email, we highlighted the fact that parents or legal guardians in this district were not consulted or counseled with about their will concerning the pending mask mandate that would be implemented in the upcoming school year. I admit that I am ignorant to most protocols and procedures that school boards and school administrators have to abide by. I also admit that it's counterproductive for this school board to consult with the parents or legal guardians that they represent on each and every issue that is brought before them. However, the decision to make mask-wearing mandatory for all children in this district when given the freedom to choose as Southern Illinoisans is unprofessional and unethical. It is my shared opinion that this subject should at least have been presented to the parents and legal guardians within the district in order to understand their voice and their will concerning the matter. The debate as to whether masks, but man, sorry, the debate whether to mandate mask-wearing or not is a sensitive and emotional one. It's a debate that has compelling arguments on either side. This is exactly why it should be given time and space in meetings such as this in order for school board members and school administrators to truly hear and understand the people in which they serve. I wish to reiterate that I am pro-vaccination and pro-mask-wearing instances where social distancing is not possible for the near future. This current wave of cases will pass. The mandate handed down by the governor will be lifted at some future date. When those things happen, I invited the members of this school board to reconsider lifting or eliminating the mask mandate that they agreed to before the governor mandate. Allow the people that you were elected to serve to be truly served and assure them by actually hearing them, by making their voices lead to implementation via parent or legal guardian choice. I've been informed by school board members and school administrators are afraid of potential legal action associated with a positive COVID case that may be contracted at a school building. I challenge the legal counsel and insurance providers of this district to find and prove precedent of such a legal case in the United States of America. If there is no precedent, then we as a community should act to eliminate unsubstantiated fear in our community, especially fear of what may or may not happen. Risk assessment is not the new normal, but is in fact a big part of our shared human experience in a civilized society. Seek to know the majority interest of the individuals you serve. This can be accomplished by the most effective method of your choosing. Leave here the resolve to dig deeper and do better. Thank you. And I'll, I'll leave this behind for whoever wants to see it. If you want to throw it away, you can throw it away.
I'll do the same thing if you were to hand it right there to Mrs. Bush.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Are there any other public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? Okay, we'll move into old business, and the first item under old business is the District Financial and COVID Update. Dr. Evers?
Um, just regarding COVID testing, we have done, reformed 790 COVID binex rapid testing since our inception, 11/24 of 2020. We, over the first, um, seven months till July, July 1, we did through the fiscal year. Um, or June 30th, we had 24 positive cases. Since July 1, we've had 10 positive cases. Um, so, uh, percentage-wise, just an uptick. Um, but, um, 34 total cases since, uh, November, November 24th of 2020. So that's what, you know, we're seeing kind of in the here and now, but since July 1, 10 cases.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Item number two is the press 107 update, which was provided at the July meeting. And every, every board member had the opportunity if they had questions, so I will assume that those were answered, and I will entertain a motion to approve the updates as presented.
I do have a question, right? Back to the, on the district financial update. Is there any way we can get our board tickets earlier than Friday before the board meeting?
I, I wouldn't see any reason why. Um, Wednesday earliest that you can have financial statements ready.
The financial statements were done a week ahead, a week ago. So it's just the, the bills, trying to get as many bills as we can on schedule for that cycle. I mean, I realize that we're probably gonna have some bills that we pay in between that Tuesday and the following Tuesday, but just putting us time-
Just looking at like a Tuesday or Wednesday, like, do you want it like five or six days before the board meeting?
I mean, that's up to everybody. I, I had already asked Dr. Evers about it and just said that I would probably bring it up here, but it does make it easier personally for me, and I know that there's other items that's on there that we probably need them all over a little bit more than a couple of days.
So like more like a Wednesday, like delivering?
Mm-hmm.
I, I can do it. I mean, I can do it.
But the, the only question is whether or not we're gonna have all the reports available.
If the reports, if they can all be, um, given to Ms. Hines by Wednesday, before you can deliver them on Wednesday.
Yeah, all my secretaries know at the first of each month, they are supposed to go ahead and send it to me. So my stuff's usually copied and, and ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah, there may be a few more, um, in between, bills in between at the board meeting when we come the next week. That might be the only thing.
Anybody have an objection to getting them earlier?
That may, may create, like, instances where we may have to, like, amend the agenda, but I don't foresee any problem with that. Do you? I mean, if something would come in between, if you get it on Wednesday or since Friday. Have, have had to amend the agenda, no. And, um, also forgot, on, um, district financial, we'll have, uh, by the September board meeting, a little bit more, like, clearer process and plan for CARES III money. We're, we're spending, um, some time on Friday afternoon, kind of fleshing out where we, we are on our CARES III, you know, allocation and how we're going to, um, spend that projected allotment.
So we're gonna try to get them all Wednesday?
Yes, absolutely. I don't have a issue with that.
I didn't hear any objections to that either, so, okay.
Can I say, since on the financial report, we kind of moved on fast. I just wanted to say that, um, we did get an increase in our evidence-based funding this year, a little over a half a million dollars, which is good news. And we, we received our first evidence-based funding payment already in August. Uh, just, uh, finished the transportation report this week, so we'll be getting the state money up between, um, regular and special education from last year of 1.1 million, we're going to this year's budget. So, um, just a couple of key points. No property taxes yet, though.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the press update.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now move into new business. The first is the District 186 Tenant to Fiscal Year 2022 Budget. We need to set the hearing date for September the 28th of 2021 at 5:45 PM. So this will move the regular meeting back, which we always do every year, one week, and we'll be here 15 minutes earlier for the budget here. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that, uh, schedule change. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number two is the fundraising for 2021-2022 school year, which is as follows. The Murkisboro High School will be selling the gold cards. The Murkisboro Middle School is still to be determined. Corether's and the General will be using the Paragon Promotions, um, fundraising, and I'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented, and I'm assuming that we have not heard from the middle school yet.
Correct.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve those promotions for this coming school year.
I have a question before that.
Yep.
Do we only have to approve these if the fundraiser is using another company or any fundraiser that's anticipated to gain more than a thousand dollars? I was worried about the, I, I was confused by the wording.
And I don't know how the smaller ones, like if a cheer, the cheerleaders do a t-shirt fundraiser, like, do, are these only the larger scope, and that's a question that-
If they're signing a contract-
If they're signing-
With profits over, typically if they're doing a fun, a t-shirt fundraiser, they're not signing a contract. It's just going to silver.
That's striking.
I thought, I always thought it was over a thousand dollar profit, expected.
It's like a silicon fundraiser where we do sign something that makes over a thousand dollars would have to come here, too, at the little ones.
The little ones, no.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number three is the approval of tuition-free students for 2021-2022, which will include Andre Gibbs at 7th grade, Leland Hernan in 1st grade, and Eliza Hernan, 3rd grade. And if there are any, are there any questions from the board on those three? And I'll entertain a motion to approve those tuition waivers for those three students.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four is a consolidation district plan, which we do every year. Um, I'm just gonna ask for a motion to approve it. So move. And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're welcome.
I have it on me. Do you want to know what?
No. You're right, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. All right, now, item number five is the registration. This is starter school information, which is informational only. Dr. Evers?
It was, and I did not print off the class counts. Here, I can give them to you. Do you have them? Yeah. Sorry. Oh, you're fine. I forgot to print it off.
Give me a minute. I've been on jury duty, and I've got like 100 emails, so.
Oh, here it is, class counts.
Here it is. We got, um, 630 at the high school, 441 at the middle school, 424 at Corether's, and 432 at General John A. Logan. That's where we're at right now.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board?
Had a very good first day, um, little bit of logistics on, we haven't done, um, dismissal with all the cars since, like a traditional one since two thousand nine, you know, August two thousand nineteen, so just a lot of moving parts and just getting things kind of streamlined and moving a little bit more quickly, but it's a little bit slower today, but I think every, every student, there are lots and lots of, you know, cute, happy children and, you know, the spaces. I would say that Darren Ripley and his staff has to be commended. They moved heaven and earth to clean and make sure that the middle school, and the middle school was really a construction zone until, uh, I mean, they were moving and doing touch-up and, um, different activities until Sunday evening. And so on Monday, they just really went in and did a deep clean, and it's, is it perfect? But I would say we're at probably the, you know, when Mr. Seifert and I talked yesterday about a ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent completion, they're gonna be doing some work, um, on our in-service day on Friday when the students aren't here, they're gonna be, um, doing some hardware and some trim and just additional, you know, finish work, but it was, it was pretty nice to see that polished, shiny, you know, um, travertine this morning and, and just a school that was ready for kids, and so I know, uh, it's, it's been a long, hard process and lots and lots of moving parts all summer long with contractors and subcontractors. And Mr. Ripley and his team were just so gracious to work around and through delays and just the process and just, um, it's pretty great. But we'll say that probably the, the most, um, like, up in the air with the carpeting, when they opened the boxes, they were all labeled. They went to picture, uh, or pick up the carpet in, um, uh, Georgia this past weekend, brought it there, and they were all labeled with the same dye lot, and when they opened the box, it was three different rolls of carpet, all different patterns and colors, so they had gone to make sure that it could be installed on Monday to get those ladies in their space. And, uh, they, they, they couldn't do anything except for laugh and say, okay, we'll work through it, and so they're going to go back, you know, to the manufacturer and try to get carpeting, so I said, you'll be in your space by Friday, and then I was like, can we make Friday happen? And he said, we will do everything in our power, so hopefully there won't be any more delays, but, um, it, that was the one space that they're now occupying a temporary space in the library, and it is really nice to be in the middle school where it's comfortable, like, the temperature is comfortable throughout hallways, classrooms. It's having those individual climate-controlled spaces, it's quiet, you, if you drive by, you don't see all of the window units on the front and that just, I think it just makes it look even more majestic, you know, since it's an older structure, so I think we have a lot more usable years in our, in that facility based on the work that was done with the electrical upgrades and it's gonna be, you know, an asset to the community like it has been for the last century for a few decades to come.
And I'll remind the board that one time when we did a feasibility study three years ago, that building was recommended to be replaced, but the work that we've done with that particular building has extended the life now from what I'm understanding anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five years, so.
Easily, yeah.
It's, it's unbelievable, and it is a great building.
It is.
Okay. Uh, item number six is the approval of the agreement to work with Hirsch-Roché Architects for HVAC and roof replacement and office space addition here at McElvein. It's enclosure number one in your packet, and I'll open the floor for any questions.
Just gonna give a brief, brief overview. Um, the, the life of this roof is, is exceeded now over thirty years. They, uh, when I talked to Mr. Seifert, he thought it was somewhere between twenty and twenty-five years on both the roof and the rooftop units. Um, uh, the business, um, office has been, that building is over thirty years, closer to forty. And if you've driven by and looked back there, it's seen better days, I mean, it, it had a floor replacement and it still has some soft spots in it, you know. Um, it's just a modular structure that has, has probably doubled its usable life. So when we were looking at, um, replacing the roof and the HVAC units to do the continuous membrane onto an addition, so it will be a sixteen hundred square foot addition, so about four hundred square feet per, um, office space or small classroom space so that it's a little bit more flexible in its design. Um, it will be, um, just placed, I guess where the former entryway was, just straight, essentially straight this way. And it will be three office spaces that could be used, have flexibility in future uses if our needs change. Right now, we have three programs that occupy every single classroom, every office in this building. We generate, um, a hundred thousand dollars in revenue from their, the releases of, you know, those groups. So that offsets some of the cost of, of bringing in the business services to, you know, the school, but the timing to me is perfect because when we were doing a new roofing system to, to make sure that the addition links in and has that, that continuousness um, is, is something that's important to me, and also when you look at Southern Seven, Head Start, the S I U partnership and Tri-County partnership, over ninety percent of the students who are in our pre-K programs or in those pre-K programs will be students in our school system, so they go to a pre-K program and they feed right into our school, so, you know, aside from Tri-County, almost all of the students who, um, access the services here are going to be our future students, so. I think it's a win-win, the timing of this came out, um, pretty quickly. We, on Thursday, we received word that they were, the state of Illinois was gonna do a, a fifty thousand dollar matching grant, and so we wanted to get it timed so that we could apply for the, the construction grant, so.
All right, any questions from the board?
What are you gonna do with the old modular?
Well, that will be, we'll have to look at the cost to remove it once they, the structure's built, we move them in. We'll, we'll be looking at removing two structures, that structure as well as the, the modular structure that is in a state of disrepair in front of Carruthers. So, um, once, once that structure is built and everyone is moved in, we'll have to have a removal cost projected for those two, two modular structures because the Carruthers structure is not fit for occupancy for at all, I mean, so.
I, I asked for demo costs to be included on this estimate, so this, if, if we choose to demo that, that's.
That was gonna be my question, that cannot be included in it.
I asked for that, I think.
If the board approves it, I mean.
Well, that, can that include demo, and was told that it does.
To remove all, remove all, so.
It does.
Just this one?
Just this one, yeah, because I didn't realize that we were at that point. And, and, um, correction, when I told you earlier on the, on the rental income, um, when I told you a hundred, that included the, the three, two choices classes with the high school and the one, um, uh, Tri-County class at Carruthers, so.
Okay.
Uh, I looked at my budget and, and rent, and so it's seventy thousand for, for this, for this program and this building, yeah, and we get thirty from the other two, three Tri-County classrooms, so, sorry about that.
There's an ongoing need for the so-called tenants of this building, I mean, is there fairly strong commitment from Tri-County, Southern pre-K?
They've expressed that they'd like to stay here, they, they, um, two or three years ago, they were considering, but they were really, really content, and I have not heard anyone with any notion or inclination to, um, to go somewhere else, so, or look at getting a separate, like, sustaining structure. I do think that most of them value that, um, we provide custodial throughout the day, I mean, they, if they have a need, it can be addressed pretty quickly. And, um, I think that most of those programs are three or four classrooms, and so to get to a space to be that small for their need is really harder to find. You know, you can find giant structures that, you know, are, you know, ten thousand square feet and they really need about three. And then to, to fit those, those, like, if you were looking at more of a commercial, to get them to meet all the school codes and the regulations for DCFS for, like, the Head Start program, it's really harder to do than, than most people can invest, so I, I do not foresee anyone looking to exit, you know, their, their lease partnership with us, so.
We just signed a five-year agreement last year with Head Start, so they'll be with us at least another four years. And then, um, Tri-County programs, they just really don't have anywhere else to go, they're, they're out of space at Tri-County Center.
And they closed show, so they've actually, like, reduced their footprint.
Yeah.
And they like the centralness of being able to serve, you know, students even from Decoy or DeSoto or, you know, just more of the regional need for, for pre-K students who have, you know, more significant needs, so.
As far as exterior appearance on the addition, will it look somewhat similar to?
They're gonna try to tie it in to look similar facade-wise to the existing brickwork and kind of.
Obviously, will I be able to match, match brick from the fifties or sixties or?
I don't know if it will be that great, but, you know, give it seven to ten years and it will kind of, like, all start to.
I think part of it's drive it, isn't it?
Under all of the windows on that side is drive it, I think even above the windows.
Yeah, I think we have that white, that white drive it now.
White above and then the lower third is brick, so. It will be aesthetically pleasing and it will jut out of the side, kind of where Mr. Carrington's office is, so. It's sixteen hundred square feet, so it's, it's fairly substantial, it's not just like ten by ten or twelve by twelve office space. This will, you know, hopefully have good, um, versatility for as the, the district's needs, you know, grow and change, but for our immediate need, we, we really do need to have, you know, something done with, with that vertical structure.
Could we ask the A E firm for at least a, a preliminary schematic as they go through their design process to be shared with the board?
For sure. They have some renderings, I don't, I can make sure that those are sent, you know, basic rendering's correct, and so we can, yeah.
That helps the decision when we're ready to award bids go a little easier, so we've got at least a vision or a mind months ahead of that.
Of what, yeah, what we'll, we'll see at completion, I a hundred percent agree, because in your mind, you know, well, rooftop units, well, you'll be able to see because they're, you know, visible from the street, but, you know, when you're looking at adding an addition, I, I a hundred percent agree that we need to, um, you know, provide you with those. Especially when we get to, to awarding the bids, you know, knowing what we're going to be.
We've already cleared that hurdle, now we're just, yeah, totally in the contracts.
Sure, yeah.
Um, obviously, the HVAC systems will be, uh, more ventilation available for students, fresh air. Um, obviously more energy efficient than twenty-two-year-old units.
Absolutely, and we're hoping that it can, um, tie into the CARES because, um, when you look at, um, HVAC units that are twenty or twenty-plus years old, they're not going to have, you'd have to put, build curb adapters if the roof wasn't replaced, you'd have to build curb adapters to set the, um, new units on and, you know, they, they're typically not the same size as especially that antiquated, so, you know, looking to potentially put, build in the roof project and the HVAC into CARES because it improves the air quality and it has to, you have to replace the roof if you're going to, you know, significantly change the piers or, um, curves that they set them on, so.
Any other questions from the board?
And funding sources have been worked out, so no new debt?
No.
Okay.
No, that's the, I said it can't happen, if we have to do the taxpayers with this project, yeah.
And you, you mentioned CARE, if we use CARES money, and that would be great, we could, but does that take, do we have a, a flat allotment of CARES money that we have to use?
It's a little over eight million dollars.
Right, so if we use it on this, it's not being used on something else, potentially?
Potentially, and, and we're not at that point where I don't think we're really struggling, I mean, to, like, I don't think we're gonna be taking, having to take away from things that have been asked for.
Right, okay.
Districts have made a priority for HVAC systems under.
Everywhere.
A lot of districts are doing that, and, and if they, if, if we get turned down on the roof part of this building, we do have the, uh, ability, because we can go back to March of twenty twenty on all of these grants. We do have the ability to take some of the funds this year that we've spent on the middle school HVAC project, flip those and use that, you know, make that partially a CARES project, and that, those bonds that we sold, we can then use towards this building.
Okay.
Um, it's, uh, that wasn't how I planned to do it, but it, it can be done and the, the HVAC projects are definitely being approved. So, um, I, I don't see an issue with having the, the funds to do this project without getting into, you know, and, and also trying to avoid using a lot of county facility sales tax, you know, I'd like to stay away from that, so, you know, reserves there as well.
Yeah, the general had the cooling project this year, the, um, middle school obviously has had all HVAC upgrades, um, in the last, um, two phases of the work, and then, um, this building, Carruthers, I think is the next building that would be set to have HVAC consideration, so.
With, with, also with us our funds.
Because it's, that age would be the same.
It's a work, it's a work, exactly. And the only reason that we hit this first, we needed to, they had a project to get approval for our fifty thousand dollar maintenance grant. And I know it's only fifty grand, but I don't like to lose money, so.
Other question? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement to, for the work here at McElvein.
I'll second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is the approval of the I S B E school maintenance project grant, which we just discussed. We need to approve and, um, give administration the ability to write that grant. Other questions from the board?
I'm motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. Brown, or Mr. Brown?
I was gonna say here.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries, we have a need to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meetings Act five, I'll mark the statute one twenty slash two C to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees in the district, including hearing testimony on complaint logic given to an employee to determine its validity. And number two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives with deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
And I'll entertain a motion for a second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries, five minutes?